Good afternoon. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo. Today is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start this evening's meeting with an invocation given by Pastor Oliver King from Restoration Ministries of Largo. And then if you could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. It's always a privilege to be here. Let us pray. The heavenly Father, our Creator, our heaven, our Creator of heaven and earth, our strength. Father, our present help in the time of trouble. We take this moment tonight just to thank you for your many blessings and how you provide to us each and every day. Father, you've blessed our city, our community, our families, our government. Thank you. Thank you for the hedge of protection you provided to the many families that are here that live in the city of Largo and all over. In this chambers where we ask for instructions and understanding in this meeting tonight, help us to hear, to understand, and to learn from one another, and also to celebrate each other. We ask now for your continued blessings upon our government, our schools, our officials, our families, and everyone that make up this great city of Largo. We offer our continued prayers for the homeless and those who are in need of help. Continue to bless and continue to heal the many families that are impacted by illness and circumstances, trials, and tribulations. We ask, Father, lastly, that you bless our country, our president, our leaders. We will forever thank you, Father, and we would always give you honor and thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And let the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We have two ceremonial items today. The first one is one of my favorite ceremonial items throughout the year: recognition of citizen campers.
Tonight I have the honor of recognizing some truly outstanding young individuals, campers who exemplify the values and character traits we hope to see in all our youth. I want to thank the commission and the mayor for supporting this opportunity to highlight and celebrate these remarkable campers. Each year we take a moment to acknowledge participants in our programs who go beyond simply showing up. They stand out for their kindness, respect, and integrity. In today's world, where it can sometimes feel like positive values are tested at every turn, these campers have shown us what it looks like to lead by example. True character isn't defined by grades, awards, or statistics. It shows up in your everyday moments, in the way you speak to others, the way you support your friends and your teammates, and how you contribute to your community. Tonight, we celebrate those small but powerful choices that reveal who someone truly is. Our first nomination this evening is from our Kid City Summer Camp. May I have Gabriela Switzer Diaz come up to the front? Gabriela is joined today by our camp director, Nina Holliday. Gabriela was nominated by her group leader, Ms. Sheridan. She said that Gabriela shows kindness to all campers. She assists during crafts and activities, making sure everyone has supplies they need. She is a great assistant. She always stays with her group and sets the example walking in the halls. She assists younger campers when they lose items at camp and helps them locate where the next rotation is. She plays safely and checks in on others when they slip or they fall. She's an active participant in camp activities and exemplifies positive qualities that make her one of our citizen campers for 2025. Remy, can you come to the front? Remy is also joined by Ms. Nina Holliday, the camp director. Remy is a camper at Kid City and was nominated by her group leader, Ms. Amara. Ms. Amara said she's so impressed with how Remy always uses kind words when speaking to others. No matter what the situation is, she respects camp property, shared spaces, and treats property as if it was her own. She is a friend to all campers, always giving a warm welcome to everyone in the group. She encourages her peers to play responsibly, to follow rules, and to use equipment properly. Remy consistently shows what it means to be respectful, responsible, and a safe camper. Congratulations, Remy, on being one of our citizen campers for 2025. Thank you. Our next nomination is Reese Turner. Reese, can you please come to the front? She's joined today by her camp director, Ms. Alicia Gracioso. She was nominated by her group leader, Ms. Maricela. She says that Reese is kind to others and helps whenever needed. She never complains when asked to assist, and she's always willing to help other campers no matter what the request. She's the type of kid that's always smiling. She cleans up after herself and others, so helpful to the group leader. She includes everyone, and she makes sure everyone feels seen. She's a good friend. She demonstrates the qualities we want all campers to have: follows directions, lines up nicely, and is always ready for her lunch and swim with all her belongings. She's a safe place for any other people in our camp, because when you're with her, everyone feels loved, respected, and included. Thank you, Reese, for always having a positive attitude. Your kindness and loving personality frighten everyone's day. Last but not least, I present Ava Robinson. Ava was nominated by her camp counselor, Ms. Joya, and she's also joined by her camp director, Ms. Alicia Gracioso. Ava was nominated as a citizen camper due to her good manners. She is so helpful and ever so polite. She shows respect and kindness for others, she assists the group leader, and she loves being a buddy and a partner to someone who's in need. She always holds the door until the last person comes inside, and she's always saying, "Yes, ma'am," and "Yes, sir," and shows appreciation for camp opportunities. Ava listens to the group leaders and is a ray of sunshine. Ms. Joya says this is one of the reasons she can't wait to come back next summer and be a group leader again. Ava is awesome. Thank you, Ava. If I could ask all of our nominees and award winners to come up front? Congratulations to each one of our citizen campers that stand before us today. Thank you for showing kindness. Thank you for showing kindness and empathy and respect in our camps. You should be very proud of yourselves, and we pray that you continue to shine bright with good character, making each day better for the people around you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. My screen is trying to get you all right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Next up is citizens' comments. If you'd like to speak about something on the agenda outside the consent docket, please wait until an item comes up. Do we have any cards this evening?
We have two cards. First is Mark Clutho.
Here's the article about Spotlight: How Can Tampa Bay Continue to Build With the Changing Climate in Mind? Well, it's definitely not like your new city hall. Makes me sick every time I go past that hideous new building. And I saw an article in the paper about buildings killing birds. And if you thought about, you're not supposed to cough into your hand. You do it like this. All the birds being killed by those glass buildings. If you factor that into your equation with that hideous structure up on top of the hill? Yeah, you wizards have it all figured out, don't you? Yeah. Here's the article: What Causes Extreme Rainfall, Flooding in Texas Hill Country? Why It's That Hot Water in the Gulf? And of course, you're complicit. Here we have heat indexes over 100 degrees. You're wearing coats. How stupid is that? The flooding in Texas is the future we need to prepare for. You aren't even close. And we're heading into hurricane season unprepared. Storms like Milton will strike. Will we see them coming? It won't make a difference. Florida is growing unaffordable. Have politicians even noticed? Well, obviously not here. When you make a stupid building like that new city hall to go with your dumb library and the other buildings. Winston Churchill said it so good, "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." And what you're doing is shaping a dim future. What morons. It's so sad. You know, science is truth, and you just keep ignoring it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Craig Murtha.
Craig Murtha, Largo. I've got good news for you. I've given up on my quest to have you turn this whole 14-acre site into a park. I guess I don't want to beat a dead horse. And I was very hopeful when I watched your coffee chat this morning, Mayor, where you said that you were hoping to have some green space here. And I think that'd be really nice. I think that any developer who wants to develop here, any smart developer, would know how much value that's going to add to the site. You know, you can see that just like, like just where our, where our Central Park is. Two of our better hotels in Largo just happen to be overlooking Central Park. And I don't think that's an accident. I think if that was a shopping center, those two hotels wouldn't be there. And so that's, so anyhow, also, I was just, and I know that you, that was in the, you know, the ballot where I think that they voted that green space could be there already. And I'm hoping that it's in the RFP where we really communicate that to the developer, that we'd like to see, I would hope, a substantial green space. I think it'd be nice if one-third of the site was green space. I mean, just like, I don't know how many feet in width, but all along that entire channel would be really nice. And you could do that. I mean, in order to do that and still get a lot of density and, you know, a lot of development, you'd probably have to go taller than, you know, maybe some people would think. But I think you can get away with going taller as long as it's set back. I mean, this building is three stories tall, and because, because it's set back so far, you almost don't even notice it. And another really better example is look at the Ellison Building right near the Pinecrest Golf Course. That's nine stories tall, and that's set back quite a bit. And it looks beautiful there. Nobody ever complains. It looks really nice. And plus, because they went tall and moved all those, all that density onto that site, we were able to get that golf course. So I think it's a really smart way to save land and get green space and really have the best of, you know, everything, you know? And I would love to see us really dramatically expand the stormwater capacity on site and to widen this, this area of, of the channel here. And I think it could come all the way to the new development. You, you see that sometimes where they build like, almost like a, like a patio or dock right up to the development. I don't know exactly what's going to be developed, but you could really make this stormwater, you know, you could really increase stormwater capacity and make something really beautiful by embracing, you know, the waterfront. And I think that's, let's see. Oh, yeah. Just one thing, I was thinking about a developer that I talked to years ago, an older guy, and he told me about this development he did in Texas where he, he was required to have an awful lot of stormwater capacity, and, and other developers had passed on this site, but he ended up putting like a river all the way around his entire development. And he put a boat in there, and it turned out to be beautiful, and it ended up raising the value of his site. Have a good day.
Thank you.
That's all the cards.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda.
Move approval.
Could we pull item eight, please?
Item eight, a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 15.
Move approval.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item five, approval of an agreement regarding landscaping in the city's right-of-way adjacent to 401 West Bay Drive to be installed and maintained by TAC WFLOZ Property Owner LLC. Item six, authorization to piggyback on the agreement between Mount Manatee County and Eurofinns Environment Testing Southeast LLC to perform analytical laboratory services for the annual requirement of the wastewater reclamation facility for a 12-month period. Item seven, appointment of Samantha Fenger as a member of the Community Development Advisory Board. Item nine, authorization to purchase a replacement vehicle from DeVal Ford in accordance with the Florida Sheriff's Association Contract Number FSA 24-VEL-32 in the amount of $83,492. Item 10, authorization to proceed with purchase of materials and services to refurbish and upgrade the Largo Library HVAC system through Carrier Corporation in the estimated amount of $475,250 in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 080824-CAR. Item 11, authorization to proceed with the complete replacement of all flat roof sections at the Largo Public Library in the estimated amount of $250,000 with advanced roofing incorporated in accordance with Pinellas County Contract 190-0336-B. Item 12, authorization to purchase point-blank body armor ballistic protection from Federal Eastern International through the NASPO Contract Number 46151500-NASP0-21-ACS in the approximate amount of $52,000. Item 13, authorization of the First Amendment to Task Order Number 1-2024, Hurricane Helena Milton debris monitoring. Item 14, authorization to enter into a renewal of the agreement for latent fingerprint and crime scene services from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for the Largo Police Department for fiscal year 2026. Item 15, authorization to expend funds in an amount not to exceed $105,000 for the police department's elevator full modernization in accordance with Omnia Partners Purchasing Agreement Number R250704.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion, including staff background, providing the commission packets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item number eight.
Mr. Johnson. I just wanted to recognize Adam Sarlo, a good friend of mine, is here today. I appreciate your service to our community in your chosen profession, and also, I just sincerely appreciate you serving our city on our library advocacy board. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And thank April for giving you up one night a month. We appreciate that, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I said, since you pulled it, I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity to thank Aiden Barnes, as well as Samantha Fenger, from serving on other, on this advocacy board, as well as another one. So thank you for putting in the time, and thank you as well. I thought you were going to have a problem with the...
It was... I was like, did I... What are you talking about? [laughing]
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of, oh, shit. Maybe it was move, my screen just went off.
I move to approve... Can I do it?
Yep, go ahead.
I move to approve the appointment, appointments of Mr. Adam Sarlo and Ms. Aiden Barnes as members of the library advocacy board.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, and congratulations. Next is item number 16.
This is the second reading of an annexation of a commercial property on Starkey Road. It's located at 1350 Starkey Road. Upon, should the commission approve this, we will proceed tomorrow with not only welcoming these people into the city, but working with them on the development, their development plans for this site.
Ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, annexing the within-described tract of land located at 1350 Starkey Road, Pinellas County, Florida, and contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Largo, Florida, with city land use designation of Industrial Limited, redefining the corporate boundary of the city of Largo to include said addition according to the provisions of Chapter 171 Florida statutes, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-12 on second and final reading.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2025-27.
This is the second reading of the solid waste rate increase ordinance. Option two was selected on July 15. Option two is a 10% rate increase, and it is tiered recycled dumpsters. I'm available for any questions.
Ordinance number 2025-27, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending the city of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-1, Definitions by amending Section 20-2D, mandatory collection of solid waste regarding mandatory service to single-family residences and additional dwelling units, by amending Article 2, Section 20-30, to increase fees for residential solid waste curbside service, by amending Section 20-32, to increase fees for commercial and industrial container solid waste service,
to increase fees for commercial and industrial container solid waste service, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, which is to amend the wastewater rates by a uniform five percent increase beginning October first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, as a reminder, the effect of this rate increase is approximately two million dollars in additional funding during fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for this fund. The increase is necessary to support increased operating costs, planned capital improvement projects, and debt service needs. Uh, the wastewater fund is an enterprise fund, meaning that it's self-supporting, and the customer area is about a hundred and ten thousand, versus not just the citizens of Largo, which the population is about eighty-five thousand. Uh, the monthly increase as a result of this for residential customer inside our city limits using about four thousand gallons of water per month would be an additional two dollars and forty-one cents in their monthly bill. As a reminder, for residential customers, wastewater billing is capped at ten thousand gallons per month as well. So customers using the max would see a three dollar and sixty-one cent per month increase. So there have been no changes since first reading on July fifteenth, where the ordinance was passed by a four to two vote. And staff is available for any questions.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-three, Article two, by creating Section twenty-three dash three, providing definitions, by amending Section twenty-three dash twenty-four C discharge of certain substances prohibited or restricted, by amending Section twenty-three dash eighty-four by increasing certain wastewater rates, and by amending subsection twenty-three dash eighty-five by adding additional connection charges, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and the new wastewater rates, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Commissioner Holmes.
Inside the city or outside the city, it's the same rate per gallon, including the hookup? Is there a different charge for hookup if they're outside the city?
So it's a twenty-five percent increase for an outside-the-city, um, residential property for wa, using our wastewater? So you would take the inside rate times twenty-five percent?
Times twenty-five percent. Alright, so there, it is a tiered rate, in, if you're in the city or outside the city?
Within the city limits.
That's actually an incentive then for someone to join the city?
To annex in.
You know, go along with annexation, because then you'll save a little bit of money on that.
Yes.
You know what? It'd be interesting to see how many fees that we do have that you have non-residents can pay the fee and use the service, i.e. the parks, for example. I, I wonder if we have a chart that says, these fees, the wastewater, the whatever it may be, if you're in the city, it's this rate, if you're outside the city, it's this rate.
I believe that our annexation department does have that chart.
We do have, I'd love to see it. John, can you, can you give me a copy of that? I'd love to see it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBree.
Thank you. Um, just on first reading, I had voted no on this one, as I believe there are other avenues we can do to avoid the increase, not to, um, squash the great work the city has done on preparing this, but I am going to renew my no vote.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's why we called you a communist.
Commissioner, no.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight on second and final reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Thank you. Next item is twenty, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
Okay, uh, so this is the second and final reading, um, of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, which is to amend the stormwater rates beginning October first, two thousand twenty-five. Um, at the first reading, the commission was presented with two uniform options for the rate increase. One of them was a seven and a half percent, which would have required changes to the planned capital improvements, um, from the approved CIP. And then the other one was a fifteen percent rate increase, which was in line with the original Comprehensive Stormwater Asset Study recommendations from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The commission approved moving forward with the fifteen percent increase by a six-zero vote. Uh, the effect of this fifteen percent increase is approximately one point eight million dollars in additional funding during fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for this fund. The monthly increase for a residential customer as a result would be two dollars and thirty-one cents per month. Uh, the rate per equivalent residential unit would go from fifteen forty-one to seventeen seventy-two. Commercial properties are billed at the same rate per equivalent residential unit, which is the equivalent of three thousand square feet of impervious surface. There have been no changes since first reading on July fifteenth, and staff is available for any questions.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter twenty-three, Article three, Stormwater Utility, by amending Section twenty-three dash one five five, Rates and Charges, to increase the rate charge per equivalent residential unit parentheses ERU for calculating stormwater utility fees, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, um, I don't know if you would be the person to ask, or someone else. Um, at the work session, we talked a little bit about, uh, CIP projects in this fund, that's coming from this fund. The mayor brought it up as an example of, uh, Venetian Gardens. How, how are we fluctuating with this? Are we still sticking to the plan of what's the CIP? Or is staff readjusting, um, looking at different options of priority?
I believe we'll be talking about that at the next, uh, the next budget workshop. The staff did consider this issue and did make recommendations regarding prioritizing, um, Pine Crest Golf Course over, um, Venetian Gardens project, uh, but again, that final conversation will occur with the commission.
Okay. Will it impact this? I mean, like, is this gonna be a drop in the dime if, if we go, I'm just using, we ship that project over?
Well, we'll be allocating the resources differently, but it's from the same, same pot of money.
Okay.
Yeah, those would be of the descriptive projects that would have been included as tier two and tier three in that original study.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five twenty-nine on second and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is the second and final reading of the third quarter budget amendment. There have been no changes since first reading, and staff is available for questions.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget adopted by Resolution Number twenty-four oh six as amended by budgeting six hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred dollars to fund Largo Central Park restroom site work, to fund the purchase of portable traffic volvards, to fund the replacement of two refrigerators, and to add one ice maker within the police department, to fund consultant services for building, permitting, and plan review customer service engagement, for technology consultant services related to the city's data warehouse, for consultant services related to the search for a developer for the redevelopment of the city hall site, and to fund a storage structure at the police canine compound. All as shown in Appendix A attached to this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five thirty on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Commission. Before you, is the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, which amends the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget in the amount of six million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars for hurricane recovery expenditures. Uh, no changes have been made for, from first reading on July fifteenth, and staff is available for questions.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget adopted by Resolution Number twenty-four oh six as amended by budgeting six million nine hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to fund contractual obligations, overtime expenses, and miscellaneous expenditures related to Hurricane Helena and Milton response. All as shown in Appendix A attached to this ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Any questions? I have a question. Um, I'm just gonna save seven million rather than six million nine hundred and something. Um, so seven million dollars that we spent on these hurricanes, um, it was money that we didn't anticipate spending. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so that, that money, did it all come out of, um, fund balance or different fund balances?
It will. Yes, sir, for multiple funds, um, the ordinance itself breaks out.
So I'll get, I'll get to my question. My question is, um, assuming that much or all of this will be reimbursed in the future, because I know our finance department is working hard to see that that happens, is that in our future fund balance, um, projections?
Yes, sir. So the, not all of the expenses that are encapsulated in this budget amendment will be reimbursed by FEMA, but the reimbursement from FEMA is taken into consideration in the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Okay, um, and going forward, because, because it may not come in twenty-six, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. Vice Mayor Holmes.
You know, we could use a couple of sous-sayers here. How, how much are we expecting to get back from FEMA? Are, are we gonna try for the whole enchilada here, or are we just gonna get a portion of it?
As much as we can.
It's like my wife will ask me for money. How much do you need? How much you got?
The, I'd have to defer to Rebecca on the exact amounts of what we're, um, what we're looking at currently, because she's in conversation with FEMA representatives at the moment. But for fiscal year twenty-six, I know that we have, uh, five million programmed in, uh, in solid waste.
So the total amount, with the exception of the permanent work, which is something that we're still compiling, so all the emergency work that happened right away is about eight million dollars across mostly the general fund and the solid waste fund. But then also, the emergency time for staff and stormwater is another big one as well. So as you mentioned, not everything is, is recoverable, because we can't submit for things like fuel, but we can't submit for things like use of vehicles, so, um, that cancels off that cost, so we are reimbursing for all of it.
Well, if you took seven million dollars out of that, did that pretty well wipe out the, the surplus that was in those accounts?
Well, with the available fund balance that was in the general fund, uh, has been able to support it right now, which obviously is dropping our fund balance at the end of this year, this fiscal year.
Yeah, that's taken a pretty big hit on that. Okay, thank you.
And there, there are cities in Pinellas County that had to borrow money in order to pay for, um, debris removal in their cities, because they didn't have, I mean, the smaller cities didn't have the sizable fund balance that we had. And they would never anyway, but they had, I know a couple cities had to borrow money in order to pay for, with anticipation that they're gonna get reimbursed from FEMA, but paying interest on those mon, on that money.
And we saw, um, fifty percent advanced funding for solid waste removal as well, and we were provided with that. So we haven't gone through the entire planning process, but we did receive money upfront from FEMA.
Very good. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five there's thirty-one on second and final reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up is item number twenty-two.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As many of you have not met me yet, my name is Catherine Simkins, and I am the Risk Manager here for the city. We come before you this evening with Resolution two four four two, requesting authorization for the city manager to issue a notice of intent to withdraw from public risk management of Florida, also known as PRM. The city joined PRM's property and casualty insurance pool in April two thousand twenty-four. Our current policy is set to renew on October first, two thousand twenty-five. This year, we are exploring the feasibility of moving to a standalone insurance program to determine the best option for both coverage and cost. Under PRM's current bylaws, the city must provide a notice of intent to withdraw at least forty-five days before the renewal date. Submitting this notice now ensures that we remain in compliance with those requirements while we complete this analysis. We will return to the commission in September to present our findings and recommendations. If we determine that a standalone program is in the city's best interest, we will follow up with formal notice to PRM confirming the non-renewal. However, if our analysis shows that remaining in the current program continues to be the most beneficial option, PRM will allow us to continue with that renewal process. At this time, staff is available to answer any questions.
Resolution number twenty-four forty-two, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, authorizing the city manager to provide public risk management of Florida with notice of the city's intent to withdraw and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards?
We have no cards.
Commissioner DeBree.
Thank you. Um, I assume we're going on to private market for brokers?
Um, so we do have a broker, and we are going out to private market with them to check out different insurance plans.
Okay, alright, so we're not, we're not, we have a broker, we're just not, we're not, I thought, I thought we might be seeking a broker as well, so, okay.
Correct. No, we're not doing an RFP for a broker.
Thank you for the clarification. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-four forty-two.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you and welcome. Next up is item number twenty-three, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four.
Good evening. This item is to amend fees within the Recreation Parks and Arts Fee Ordinance and for a portion of the user fees to be put in a reserve fund for future capital expenses for the department. Thank you. Um, over the past several months, the Recreation Parks and Arts team completed an analysis of fees charged by our department in other municipalities in our area. In most categories, we determined that the City of Largo was charging less than others, and some other municipalities indicated that they are considering increasing their fees as well. One challenge in the process that was the difference in services from other municipalities and what is included with each fee. So for example, um, in the City of Largo, our membership, um, for the Recreation Department can be used at multiple facilities, um, where some other cities may only have one facility. Um, and also, many other municipalities charge a differential in both their membership for resident, non-resident, as well as their user fees, where our department, um, we only charge the differential in the membership fee, and then everybody pays a membership fee. So you'll see that on some of the future slides, um, for the fee structures. Once the research of the fees was completed, um, a retreat was held with the RPA programming staff, where we reviewed all of the other, uh, fees and determined the proposed fees for our department. And those fees were shared with the Recreation Parks and Arts Advocacy Board during the June meeting, and all of the members that were present were in support of the changes. Meg, our department business manager, will now review some of the proposed fee changes in the ordinance. Alright, um, to start out, we've got our membership fees. The Recreation Parks and Arts Department offers a variety of membership options. We offer a base membership, which allows members to use the facilities and participate in programs at the member rate. This membership gives access to the walking track at Highland and the, uh, member rate for all of the programs that we offer. The Plus Membership is a membership option that includes unlimited use of the fitness room, Play World, and lap swimming at Southwest Pool. With the exception of childcare, participants may use the facilities or participate in programs at a higher fee without a membership. A membership is required for all childcare programs. Resident membership fees have not been increased since two thousand and ten. Um, non-resident membership fees were adjusted in twenty twenty-four. The department drop-in and pass fees offer additional options for our users. If they do not want to purchase the Plus Membership, which includes these drop-in fees, um, they can choose to pay a daily rate or a monthly rate. Um, we also offer a RecFit Unlimited Pass, which allows users to use any of our fitness classes, um, unlimited, and they do not have to pay the extra fee for those programs. We also have our athletic rental fees, which are an hourly fee, um, for the use of our space, and then the two different prices would be with or without lights, and then our tournament fees, which are based on a partial day or a full day. Our facility rental fees for the Recreation Parks and Arts Department are based on the facilities being rented and the size of the room. The proposed ordinance changes also include the creation of several rental packages for the Central Park Performing Arts Center. A reduced rate is also available for nonprofit organizations wanting to rent the space at RPA facilities. RPA facilities. As part of the fee analysis, summer camp fees were compared across other municipalities within our area. Due to limited municipalities offering a licensed preschool or before and after care program, we also considered private providers in the area to compare those fees. The city of Largo fees for before and after care also include transportation of the children to and from school. The city of Largo will continue to accept ELC for our after care programs and offer scholarship opportunities for families in need. So this slide highlights some of the new offerings that we have. Due to a membership being required for childcare programs, we are proposing a new childcare membership. This would include a membership for non-resident children, and with that membership, they would only be able to use our summer camp programs or our after care. It would not include any of the other programming at our facilities. But this would allow a more economical option for families that need our childcare services. And then, like I said, it would not allow them to use the facilities or participate in other programs. Our department is also expanding our scholarship program to offer assistance to users of all ages to participate in programs where this was previously restricted to childcare programs The changes in the fee ordinance being brought to you this evening also include a small portion of each user fee being saved in a reserve fund for future capital improvements throughout the department. These are just a few examples of upcoming projects that will be needed to be addressed in the upcoming years. We understand that it will take time for this fund to build up with a portion of the user fees being allocated. The fund balance will be evaluated each year as improvement projects are submitted during the budget process. If the proposed changes are approved this evening, the ordinance will be brought back for a second reading on September 2nd, and the fee changes would go into effect on October 1st. And we are available for any questions.
Ordinance number 2025-34, and ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida, amending Section 10 of Appendix B of the Largo City Code to amend certain fees charged by the Recreation Parks and Arts Department, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We have no cards.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes. First, have we ever had reserve funds put aside for future projects?
We do have a couple special revenue accounts now, where a portion goes from our user groups that use our athletic fields, the swim teams, as well as the Performing Arts Center has a special revenue fund and our scholarship account.
Okay. What, out of curiosity, what came up that made this time look at these ones at this time, at this moment, out of curiosity?
Just as more and more capital items. I mean, our buildings, you know, we built a lot of buildings all at the same time, but now they're all coming up at the same time for replacements, so as more and more of those improvement items were.
Okay. Did we do a survey of people that use the recreation services, asked what their thoughts are? Since we have most emails, did we do a community survey to ask what their thoughts were on an increase in their fees?
We did not ask about fees specifically. We did do a survey last year as part of our accreditation process.
And you said the residential one hasn't gone up since 2010, correct? And then the non-resident, you said, 2024?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at 100%, we're going up on our resident. I mean, I, and non-resident, but I think that's a lot. And after tonight, when we're talking about fees for other projects, I have a hard time supporting this one. So I won't be supporting this at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lauser.
So I just wanted to say, I appreciate the homework you guys did. I think you did lay it out at the very beginning, comparing our amenities to some other cities. It's hard to compare, because I don't think, I don't think any other cities our size have the, quite the number and quality of recreation activities that we do. So, good job. And I get it, and I also appreciate the fact that we're looking forward and hoping to set aside some money so that future capital improvements don't hit the general fund, or don't hit it as hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
I just want to say thank you for adding the existing, or the current cost column. It's helpful for me to, you know, see the changes, and I do support the fact that we're going to use these funds to help us with future capital projects. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I agree with that as well. I know that this was brought to the Recreation Advisory Board. Can you tell me what type of, if they had questions, if they had concerns, input at all, aside from approving it?
Really, the general message was just that we were very, we still remain very economical, that everything compares to what others are charging. So there was not a lot of questions. We went through every single fee change with them, though, at that meeting.
Thank you. And second, you mentioned summer camp scholarships. Can you tell me how many, how many weeks of summer camp are attended with a full or partial scholarship, roughly?
Yeah, it just varies on the individual. Most people are using all 10 weeks of summer camp and getting a scholarship for all of those 10 weeks, but if they're only needing a certain amount of weeks, we do offer that option as well.
So, when you say a scholarship, does that mean a reduced rate, or does that mean?
The participant pays a reduced rate, but we supplement that reduced rate with our scholarship fund. So, we're still.
Which much of that comes from the mayor's golf tournament, just remember, in May, I think. Yeah, do you have any idea how many, how many kids are using scholarships to attend our camps?
Yes. On average, it's about 100 kids each summer. It's usually about probably, it gets you a 50% off, so it's usually between $50,000 to $70,000 per year. It fluctuates year to year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith?
A question that came to my mind. Did we reach out to our reciprocal cities, like Pinellas Park is a reciprocal with us? Are they cool with this? Or are they, we're going to have to come back to readjust that reciprocal agreement with them?
We did not reach out to them, but we have never cleared fees with them. It's just that we recognize the residency for them.
But, so, even though our fees are going up, we're still going to keep them at the rate? They know we're going up, correct? So they pay right now $10, correct?
Yes.
So, we didn't let them know that our fees are going up also, so wouldn't that be something that they would want to know if their residents are now paying more, from 10 to 20?
We can notify them. It's just, I believe the agreement just says that they are able to get it at the resident rate.
Yeah, I'm just, I would have liked a little bit more citizen input. I, you know, I think we would have, probably have a few people in the audience, but, okay. Thank you.
What other cities do we have that reciprocal relationship with?
Pinellas Park, and then Bel Air.
Bluffs.
Bluffs.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2025-34 on first reading and schedule a second reading of public hearing on September 2, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zett, anything this evening?
I don't, do not have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lauser?
Just congratulations to our citizen campers, since I'm the first one. And of course, congratulations to our employees of the quarter. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
I have the same thing written down. Congratulations. Thank you, staff, as always, for your dedication and hard work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Ditto to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Ditto. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holmes?
Well, first off, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. And I said I wouldn't sing.
Thank you.
Now, Alan said he'd love to sing. Good warrior voice. Second thing, channel 13, WTVT.com, they did a report yesterday on Largo Fire's extraction team. We are heading to, I believe it's Croatia for the championship. I think we took, John, you remember, were we second in the country?
That's correct.
Okay. We were second in the country, so now we're competing for the world. So anyway, you can go online. I just looked it up before. It's still online. Just go to WTVT.com. You can scroll down, and you'll see the, it's a very good report. I mean, they did a bang-up job on the report, so nothing to complain about. Lastly, every year, we do these evaluations of the city manager, and every year, I bitch about it. Pardon my French. This, to me, is a waste of time, because it's merely an opinion. They'll ask you a question, what is your opinion on this thing? There is not a person on this dais that does not talk to the city manager regularly, and some more than regularly. We have this home phone. I think it's in the charter that you have to have this thing, but I think we need to change this, because this particular evaluation, I just choke every year when I start filling the thing out. I say, you know, this is one of the dumbest things that we ever do on the dais here. And that's why last year, last couple of times, I've been putting, they said, you know, give it a score here. Well, I've been putting it on fractions. You want to see it? I'm going to put it down to fractions. You know, I think, you think he's a good guy, yeah, but 3.785, you know? It never comes out right. We need to change this thing around, because this is nothing more than an opinion. And it's an opinion that, we all talk to the city manager, you know, we're not violating the sunshine law when he's mentioning something he's been told. He didn't, you know, he didn't say who told him that, but it's something, most of the stuff he's aware of. You know, the city manager really doesn't go out, you know, plow a new field every day. But anyway, that's just my opinion. I don't know if I'll fill it out or not. I just may leave my nasty self and not do it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBreezy?
Nothing tonight. Again, ditto to everybody else, what everybody else has already said tonight.
Thank you. And I was going to mention the citizen campers and the young ladies swept it this year. Normally, there's a boy or two, so congratulations to the young lady citizen campers this year, and also, of course, the team members of the quarter. I did want to mention, we had a U.S. Army Specialist, Jalen Perez, a military police officer who passed away late last month. He served in the 320th Military Police Company. He died in the line of duty. He's a Largo resident, Clearwater High School graduate, and he leaves behind his wife Bianca, his daughter Jade, and his parents, who are also Largo residents, Horeen Lori Perez and Maria Aponte. So please keep the Perez and Aponte family in your thoughts. Mr. Karp?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to let the community know, this is Chief Pittman's last week with us. He'll be leaving to be the chief of fire at the city of Clearwater. We're grateful for his service to us, and we will miss him dearly as he goes to work to our neighbors to the north. Also, want to let the community know that Matt Carpenter will be our acting chief while we finish up our due diligence on deciding how we're going to fill that office. So, congratulations to him, coming up next week.
Thank you. Any action items?
The only thing I had was Commissioner Holmes' request for a copy of the chart that shows what surcharges are charged to non-residents.
Very good. Meeting is adjourned.